A call to order the December fifteenth, fourteenth meeting in 2021 of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission. So now I'll call on Commissioner Whitfield to open us with a pledge of allegiance in his comments.
Just stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The invocation.
As we gather here today as members of our city, we pray that it will be a challenge to do our very best for all citizens in our community. May we focus our time and energy on the areas that we can improve and not be distracted by the areas where we cannot. May we keep focus steadfast on making this the best city we can for all of our current and future members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Whitfield. We've got before us the agenda for this evening. We have one item of old business and two items of new business. Do we have any additional items to add? Your motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we've got the minutes from the November ninth meeting that have been circulated to the commission. Does anybody have any corrections or additions or changes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor? We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, for our first item of old business, I think Staff Person Board is up for the discussion?
It is, the applicant is requesting for deferral again.
A deferral for a specific amount of time, or is there a...
I would just say till the next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we defer?
Motion to defer till the next meeting, one month.
Second.
Any discussion about deferral? Any questions for staff? All in favor of the deferral, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, Mr. Rider, I think we've got a subdivision that's item, first item under new business.
I'm not used to going first. Good evening, Chairman Dagenhart, Vice Chairman Whitfield, Commissioners. This is a preliminary plat approval for the subdivision of S.J.L. Enterprises LLC property located at 203 Mayflower Road, which is at the intersection of Mayflower Road and Rocky Top Road, parallel to Interstate 26. This is a look at the plat. It's a five lot subdivision, one, two, three, four, five. Lots are intended for single-family development, properties owned R2C, which is low-density residential, minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, with 60 linear feet at the front building line. And subdivision regulations require you to have 50 feet of frontage on a public right-of-way. It meets all of those requirements. There's no road dedication associated with this plat, no variance requests. There is an extension of public sewer to lots two through five. This existing single-family house is already on public sewer. Straightforward. You may remember that this property was rezoned. It was R2. You all recommended rezoning to R2C. And the Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning on July the 29th of this year. We're recommending approval of the preliminary plat.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. Any questions or discussion for staff? Okay, I'll open a public hearing. Does anyone here to speak against the proposal? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. All right, discussion amongst the commission?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval. Has anybody's got anything?
Second.
Okay, any discussion about the motion to approve the proposal as stated?
Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved as presented.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Warren, I think we have another item up for agenda, on the agenda, voluntary annexation.
Be Young, I'm supposed to know that. Good evening, Commissioners, how are you doing?
Thank you.
All right, in front of you, I have a plan of services and zoning assignment for the voluntary annexation of approximately 40 acres along the northwest border of Indian Ridge Road. So I'm going to preface this with a timeline. I obviously have not been here very long, but from what I have heard, this has not necessarily been the procedure that we have followed in the past. So we took a look at the MTAS advisory and what their policy looks like for annexation and what the best procedures are.
What's MTAS?
The Municipal Technical Advisory Service?
From UC.
From the University of Tennessee.
Thank you.
So, the annexation process is going to start with a request to proceed from the city commission. So being as, you know, annexation is, you know, the bringing on of land into the city, it starts at the city commission, and they hear a request to proceed, and it's exactly what it sounds like. We want to come into the city, is this something that the Commissioners would even be interested in? And the Commissioners say, yes, we'll hear you out. And so that's where the process really begins. It gives staff the okay to go ahead and continue, dive deeper into the site, and pursue it a little heavier. So then you'll see on the next step, which is the planning commission, which is where we are tonight, you all will recommend the plan of services and the zoning assignment to the city commission. Now these two are going to be grouped together, and I will go into this later for the specific site. And then following that, it's going to go back to city commission for the preliminary resolution, and that's going to be associated with the annexation and the plan of services. And that's actually going to call for a public hearing at the next meeting. And then separately, at city commission, where they're joint tonight for planning commission, they will be separated out for city commission, they're going to hear the first reading of the zoning assignment. So from that point on, the zoning assignment function's almost like a rezoning, and that's going to go for three readings. The annexation will actually finalize at the following meeting of city commission, and that's going to be the public hearing for the annexation and the plan of services. It will also be the public hearing and second reading for the zoning assignment, again, similarly to a rezoning. And then it'll come back one more time to the city commission for a third reading. So that's going to be the general process that we're going to follow for annexations. Now for this specific request, again, it's going to be this 40-acre tract of land right around Moccasin Court, and this is Indian Ridge Road. And the annexation is going to correspond with the plan of services, which you guys have seen in your packet, and the applicant is also seeking a zoning assignment of R2C. Now for the plan of services, again, it's in your packet, this is all of the services that it includes, and I'm happy to dive into any questions that you may have about the plan of services. For the zoning request, like I said, they are requesting R2C. There's no concept plan required. So they do have plans to do 125 single-family residential lots, but I would like to remind the commission that this is not binding because there is no concept plan attached. It is currently zoned A1 in the county. And just to give you an idea of some of the adjacent zoning districts, we have County A1 around this area. This down here is County R1, and then all these around here are scattered different residential districts. And I would like to remind you guys that this will come back in front of you again as a preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of the plan of services and the zoning assignment, and this is a vicinity map to leave you guys with.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for staff?
This is currently in the county right now? Is that correct?
Yes.
What's the, it's neighboring, I guess, are R2 and RP. What's the difference between the R2C and the other R2? I can never remember.
Which other R2? Just like the general R2?
Just the general R2. I think that across the road is R2. What's the, kind of the difference between those two?
Lot sizes and lot widths.
Little bit smaller.
The R2C would be a little bit smaller.
Okay.
So the, from the previous case, 6,000 square feet, 60-foot wide lots, you're looking up what R2 is, 15,000 square feet.
Oh, okay, so significant, yeah, more of a, gotcha, okay.
So it's still, you know, single-family, but just a little bit smaller.
Little bit smaller.
So is there any contiguous land on that side of that city? Did I miss that?
It's neighboring right there is city.
So, yeah, so everything, everything yellow here is city.
Right up to the...
So this is all city, this is all city.
I guess.
But nothing, but everything's separated by, by road though, right? Is Moccasin Court?
Yes, this is, this is all road.
Okay.
It's right there where that bend is.
And I don't actually know, I mean, I know that this says that this is a road here, but I believe that this is kind of like a stub, and it doesn't actually continue. So I actually do think that these, these lands touch.
I think it's a little, it's a little pud right there that they've got a little entrance for or something, yeah.
Yeah, the road stops right here.
Yeah. So this does touch right here.
Okay, so it is contiguous.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any plan from the city side to do anything with that kind of switchback right there? I drive that road often. I mean, it doesn't seem to have any issues with traffic or anything, or, but I just have always wondered if there's a plan.
Yes.
Yes, sir? Okay, good to know.
I cannot speak to that.
That's a good segue, I guess.
So, I'm Wallace McCollough, the new city engineer. We talked about doing a roundabout there at that, where the first bend is. We'd have to work something out with the existing condominiums or townhomes that are there, and with the owner of this property as well. But that's one of the things we're looking at.
Okay.
Hold on, the land behind it's contiguous. The lot behind it is in the city. I forgot what neighborhood that is.
More questions for staff? Thank you, Peyton. I'll open the public floor for comment. Is anyone here to speak against the proposal? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the proposal? Come forward, please. And if you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Danny Karst. Address is 1504 Dobbins Drive, Kingsport, Tennessee. So, we've created an alliance with Cambro that we are very happy, staff has been great to work with, and this is adjacent too. And so, we're just very happy that it's close enough to you all that you all would consider taking us in. It's vital for us to do what we're attempting to do, no other way without you all. So, be very grateful for you all to, for all the help you can provide.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If you have any questions, maybe I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak? I'll close the floor of public comment. All right, discussion amongst the commission. Any questions or...
I have one more question for staff. What's the land use for this? Do we have a, I know it's being annexed into us, so we may not have an idea of it, but was this, do we have, is the area around it designated as residential, or?
Yeah, just to the west, there's a, there's a single-family residential subdivision.
Yeah, it's entirely residential around there. You'd have to come closer to State of Franklin. That's where the new intersection of State of Franklin and Indian Ridge is.
I guess I was talking about more like the future land use map, that...
Oh, yeah.
It's... I figured that was what you were in.
Yes, the future land use map indicates that it's residential.
Thank you.
Okay.
As far as utilities, is there any increase in status that's going to be required to support development out to this property?
What do you mean when you say status?
Is it fully serviced at this point in terms of plan for service?
Travis, Olingworth Water Sewer Department, we have capacity to serve the development as proposed.
Okay, as it states?
Yes, we have a sewer lift station actually in the curve there that sits down off the road a little ways, and we have a 12-inch water line at the, at the broadway of Indian Ridge.
Very good, thank you.
No problem.
And then I would also recommend that you guys go ahead and go through the packet, and the actual plan of services that we're operating off of is included in there, and that breaks it down by department. All of the departments I listed on the slide breaks it down by exactly what they're going to be providing, and by what point they will be providing it. So that'll kind of give you a little bit more of an idea of how the services will be impacted.
I know in the past, and I don't know if it's at this step, or maybe it's a preliminary plat, but kind of list out like the tax generation revenue. Is that usually incorporated in this, in this point, or is that future?
We will be taking that to city commission next week.
Okay.
Or on Thursday.
So there is a concept plan?
No, no, that is just sort of a tax financial breakdown.
So, no, you're doing an awesome job. This is a new process, and I realize this is a new process, and one that we have, we have examined carefully, and we've researched it through MTAS, through UT. When the, when the voluntary versus involuntary annexation laws changed, the process itself changed, but a lot of communities didn't necessarily change their process. So, what it was called before, when it was called involuntary annexation, it was called annexation by ordinance. And that was, a community could simply reach out and annex by using the ordinance process. And that ordinance process, as you know, traditionally begins with the planning commission, and then goes to the city commission in the three-reading system. When the state law changed, someone at MTAS must have realized that that was putting a tremendous amount of responsibility on a planning commission to make decisions about annexation, when the annexation is actually ultimately the decision of the city commission. The plan of services and, and how and when services would be provided to a particular territory, as well as the zoning assignment, should be the purview of the planning commission. Whether or not it gets annexed, and the cost of the annexation is the purview of the city commission. So, it's not to discount, or no, I shouldn't say discount, dismiss your question, it's that when it comes to the annexation itself and the, the cost of services, that's ultimately a city commission decision. And so, what we've done is, we reach out, we actually draft the plan of services at a staff level, and then we blast that plan of services to all the different agencies. All the different agencies have X number of days to review it and submit comments back to Peyton. They've done that, and all the different agencies have reviewed it, for example, fire, and Travis, and engineering, et cetera, et cetera, have reviewed it and said, looking at this, we are able to reasonably extend public services into this area in this manner and in this timeframe. And so, so that's simply, what that's doing is that's just outlining when and how they'll be provided. An example where, let's say that in the future we run into a situation where, you know, transit's always a tough one, schools is always a tough one, and let's say that we run into an annexation that is contiguous, but, but way far out on the outer edges of the community, and Eldana from transit says, you know what, this is just going to be an absolute disaster, I'm going to end up having to purchase, you know, two new buses, and da-da-da-da-da. If those kinds of comments come forward, we're going to share those with you, we have a responsibility to share those with you, and we would have that discussion. We did not receive any of those type comments on any, from any of the departments on this particular plan of services. And then on the zoning assignment, this comes back into your conventional planning commission world, and that is, looking at the land use, the surrounding land use, the flume, the future land use map, which was an excellent question, is the R2C zoning an appropriate zone to go in this area based on this geographic location?
I guess, I'm just thinking like, we're giving a recommendation to the city council on whether they should do this or not, just a recommendation, that's all we can do. And we're looking at the plan of services, we can see like, this, there's going to be a cost to the city, and I think it's just helpful for me when I assess it out, like, okay, but this is the estimated tax generation revenue, to kind of offset that. Does that make sense?
It does.
And I understand the ultimate decision is by city council, but we still have to make a recommendation to them.
Right, but, but your all's recommendation needs to be on, on the, are there concerns or are there issues with extending public services into a particular area? And that, the cost of doing that needs to be borne entirely by the city commission.
Yeah, I think, I think their purview is just, is this compatible with their land use, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you for that conversation.
And thanks for the clarification on how we're doing it now.
Yeah, sure.
Because that, I was like, oh, okay.
Okay, any other conversation or discussion amongst the commission? Do I hear a motion?
I move, move, second.
Let's, let's state the motion, please.
State the motion to approve the annexation of the property on Indian Ridge Road, I guess.
Anexation and zoning?
The plan of services and zoning assignment.
Okay. You got it. Nicole, do you have that?
Nicole, can you read that back?
Remember, the minutes are just what you say they are.
Exactly.
Jamie, Jamie's second.
I did second. As soon as Nicole reads that back to me, I'll second it.
Yep, you said it, that's, that's it.
Nicole, would you read the motion, please?
Yes, it's a motion to approve the plan of services and zoning as presented.
All right, any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, this is great to see someone wanting to be annexed into the city. It's, uh, thank you for the, the reach out.
All right, no other, further discussion? Nicole, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. All right, Whitney, I think we've got a text...
Text amendment.
Proposal.
So, in an effort to be responsive to some questions that we get from time to time about double-frontage lots, staff has engaged in looking at it and kind of assessing what we could do about a sec, a sec, and this is a lot of accessory structures. Assessing what we can do about accessory structures. And so to go over what a double-frontage lot is, that is where there is a house that has two roads. So there's a road at the front of it, and a road in the back of it. We have several of these around town, and I'm going, throughout this presentation, are going to show you where they're located. So one of them is here at Southwest Avenue and Cedar Place. These homes here have double-frontage. They can face either way, and you'll notice some of them do face either way. Another one here is Hollywood Lane, Vine Lane, and Faith Circle, where you have a road here and a road here, and this house actually faces, it's got three, so it's triple-frontage, I guess. And then these face different ways. And so, what happens with accessory structures currently is that they're not allowed to sit in a rear yard, they'd have to sit into a side yard, which will limit some people with the ability to place like a simple storage shed or a detached garage. And you've got this road that you can't use as a detached garage. So, we are suggesting that language be included in the definition of double-frontage lots to address accessory structures, as well as some provisions therein. And this is kind of small, so I'm going to, I wanted to show you where it was in the ordinance, as far as it's in Article Four, and how we have already some provisions for alleys, because that's another question we often get, is, well, what about an alley? We already kind of addressed alleys, and that you can, you know, have accessory structures there. One, is it kind of, actually, no, now I remember what I've done with this. Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth is a great, this, this block right here is a great example of where you have double-frontage lots and alley lots essentially in one block. So some of these can have accessory structures, some of these cannot, like, in their rear yards, and some cannot, and it's all in the same block. Here is, kind of as a diagram, which would be added to the ordinance, what that would look like, where you could have it and where you could not. So, if you were going to use it as a garage, the same principle applies for a front-loaded garage. It would need to sit at least 25 feet back. Otherwise, it needs to meet the front setback of the street. Makes sense?
The front setback of the back street?
Of the back street. The architectural rear setback of the same front. So if that all makes sense, the bridge plan supports us as we move through to make some of those changes, and staff would recommend approval. Again, I said I would pepper this whole presentation with examples of where we have double-frontage lots.
Okay, question of staff, discussion for staff.
What's the downside?
Downsides?
Just, just looks odd?
It can look, they're looking odd now, if you think about it. The downsides, I would say that looking odd, what you truly want is to keep one side where there's all fronts and all rears, and that's kind of gotten away from us every year, just as we've developed as a city. The, there could be, I would think that anything where you're impeding, because you can't really do it, any type of visibility issue, that still applies, so there's not a downside that way. We've looked at, I did a study of kind of, would there be a place where this front setback would not allow for someone to have?
That's my next question.
And there are a couple of instances, we can't, this is not a, it's not going to fix everything, but it fixes a lot, it gives more flexibility to a lot more people that have asked. And we don't get a lot of, I'm not going to say that there are droves of people coming in in these double-frontage lots that need storage sheds.
And I, when we kind of looked at this on the tree streets with the alleyways, and you may not have been here.
I was not.
And we kind of went away with some of the setbacks based on lot size. Would some of these same lot sizes be applicable here? Where the setbacks would, based on the lot size?
There are some pinch points in some of those, where you won't, you wouldn't be able to do, you may not be able to do like a full-on garage, but it does allow you to, if you needed something smaller, it just depends on the lot. Because what we didn't, yeah, and on the lot, also the lot width, or the lot length, not actual like overall size, but the lot length is really where a lot of this is coming into play. Because we didn't want it to, we didn't want them to sit in the side, in the seven and a half feet or a rear yard setback, because that was too close to the road. So, having that, maintaining that front does provide some continuity, even though it might look weird.
Thank you.
And in the tree streets, or any of the historic districts, they would still have to go before that board.
Thank you.
Is, is architectural rear defined? Or do you all just define that as the opposite of the front door?
Opposite, yes, that's kind of how.
Forgive me if it's, if you're going to find something. I tweaked your...
Oh, okay.
Item just a hair. There was, if you'll look there at the, and it's not on that one, it's on the, on the language itself, yeah. So did you go back?
Did you have a record to say that was somewhere that I could get to?
Yeah, it's, it's under iCompass.
Hmm, I think that's where I pulled it.
Okay. And so, if, if y'all are pulling from iCompass, if you look at, I'd have to just pull up iCompass.
Oh, for the purposes of double-frontage lots, the architectural rear yard is identified as the yard adjacent to the back of the building?
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. Because what, what we were going to do was come up with a separate definition, but it is so rare that we will ever need to identify an architectural rear.
You're just better to define it.
And so I just said, for the purposes of this lot, but I'm glad that the lawyer asked that question.
That's exactly what it would, that's exactly what we would be arguing over, something stupid like that.
So I tried to think of it.
All right, additional conversation with the staff? I'll, I'll open the floor for public comment. Is there any comment to be made? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. All right, any other conversation amongst the commission?
Can I make a suggestion on the little diagram? I guess that's going to be included in there as a example. Do you want to? So you've got, is the, is that box up there, the accessory? No, the one to the side. Up the top, like directly to the side of the principal dwelling?
Oh, the, it's, oh, it's an extra, yeah, I got you. That, yes, it's.
That would not be allowed, right?
Yes, that would, that, that is, it's a word that got, it should be off of there.
Oh, it should be just gone?
It should be gone.
Okay. I was just going to say, you may want to just put, this is, on this example, this is the front. You know, this is the, you know, I guess however you want to do that.
We use the word architectural rear.
Yeah. We don't have to say rear anymore.
Okay, any other conversation? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the text amendment as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved as presented.
Okay, any other business to come for the commission? Seeing none, I'll call this adjourned.
Wow.
This is a record.